All right, we have returned from closed session. So I will ask the city attorney for a readout of closed session, please.
Item, item 1A is Nino versus City. Mr. Nino filed this suit alleging that he sustained significant injuries as a passenger on a big blue bus. In order to avoid the cost and uncertainty of litigation, the city attorney's office is recommending settlement in the amount of $45,000.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Morena. May we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Anderson Warren.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McKen?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protam O'Day?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously seven to zero.
Item 1B is an item of consideration whether to initiate litigation. During a field audit, city parking staff identified approximately 110 unprocessed parking tickets in association with SP Plus's management of the beach parking lots. SP Plus initiated its loss prevention and standard operating procedure and identified additional missing tickets. The city is seeking approval and the amount, seeking approval of a settlement in the amount of $140,000 plus interest pursuant to which the city will forego litigation and SP Plus will account for all parking tickets that were identified as unaccounted for in the audit. Additionally, SP Plus has implemented new loss prevention review procedures and processes.
And just to reemphasize, in case people missed it, we're recovering the $140,000.
That is correct.
And I'll move the settlement.
All right. Moved by, oh, I heard moved by Hara. Okay. Seconded by whom?
Greg.
Greg, all right.
Everybody wants to vote.
Everybody wants to get money.
Taking the money is popular.
That's right. Moved by Hara, seconded by Morena. May we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Anderson Warren.
Mayor Protam O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember McKen?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously seven to zero. We'll be taking the money.
Item 1D was not discussed. Items 1C, 1E, 1F, 1G, 1H, and 1I were discussed with no reportable action taken. And that concludes the closed session report.
All right, thank you. Before we delve into the evening, I would like to entertain a motion for agenda management that we continue item 7D to October 22nd. That is at the request of staff.
So moved.
Moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Hara. I think since it's agenda management, we can do it by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That also passes unanimously, so that item will be heard on October 22nd. Before launching into the remainder of the evening, we do want to acknowledge, because we literally had hundreds of our local youth involved, that from September 20th to September 27th is the Climate Strike, which is a global initiative called for by the young climate activist Greta Thunberg and her International Student Alliance. For more information, you can go to globalclimatestrike.net. She's obviously made an impression at the UN, but I want to say that on Friday, over 700 Samo high students attended an assembly where climate change was addressed and it was put on entirely by the students and it was very impressive to see the number of students who have become climate activists. The climate, the Chasm Climate Corps with Climate Action Santa Monica, the Santa Monica Unitarian Church, Sunrise, and many other local and regional schools and organizations are planning actions to participate in this week-long commitment to bring attention to all about taking the climate emergency seriously with joy but bold and communal imagination. So I encourage everyone to participate in any events that they come across. We want to encourage our youth to become engaged. They are our best hope. The other announcement, it might be a little late, I don't know, but it's National Voter Registration Day. I hope if you were not registered to vote, you registered today. But if you missed it, for whatever reason, you can register any day hereafter. You didn't have to do it today. So we encourage anyone who's interested in registering to vote to speak with city clerk staff. They're in the lobby tonight, but you can also come to the clerk's desk if you have election questions. I am told there's swag.
There is.
There is swag, so you may want to go out and just ask about registering to vote. You can register to vote at smvote.net. That's all small case, S-M-vote, V-O-T-E dot net. Or you can pick up a registration form at all of our Santa Monica libraries. And later this week, the library will be conducting registration drives with the League of Women Voters at 3:30 PM on Thursday, September 26th at the Ocean Park Library and at 10:00 AM on Saturday, September 28th at the Pico Branch Library. It couldn't be easier to register to vote. Do it, make your voice heard. All right, that takes us into our two items, Ms. Anderson Warren.
So we have the City Manager Performance Report Management Implementation Plan.
Madam Mayor, if I could just introduce our Chief Performance Officer, Tim Dodd. The commitment that the council made a number of years ago to doing a better job of assessing what are, what the effectiveness of our programs is, is really what's led to our focus on performance management and performance budgeting. And Tim's here tonight to talk to you about the next five years, or the next three years, actually, because we're already two in, but how we're doing on the roadmap to doing a better job of assessing and measuring the effectiveness of what we do in the spirit of Peter Drucker, who said that which gets measured gets done, and in the spirit of allocating our resources so that we do more of what works and less of what doesn't. Tim?
Thank you, Rick, for the introduction and thanks to you and Katie for your support in doing this. And thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, for the opportunity to speak tonight for a few minutes about the plan. So like any culture change, developing a performance management program and going towards a data-driven culture in our city government is something that does take a lot of time, but also takes a lot of deliberate planning and a lot of thought. And so what I'm going to be presenting tonight is a plan that we developed. It's a five-year plan, we're a little over two years into it, that basically is going to drive towards the outcome that you see here on the bottom of your screen. A culture that uses data to drive decisions towards the achievement of established community outcomes. It's a program that supports no surprises. We want to make sure that it's a clear roadmap. I'll talk towards the end of the presentation about how we're using it internally and how we'll be communicating it, but it's meant to be a living and breathing document, something that allows us to identify what the key strategies are, what the phases are, and how we're implementing it. So this quote is attributed to Tom Peters, but also Peter Drucker, different versions of it, what gets measured gets done. And obviously, it's no coincidence that it's also on the same slide as the Trivial Pursuit Wheel, I guess I'll call it, that you've seen many times, which basically shows, and I know all of you have seen this many, many, many times, but just to point it out again, this basically identifies that everything we do as a city, this framework wheel identifies what the large-scale outcomes are that we want to achieve that are in the inner ring, and then also all of the different, what we call sub-outcomes, the different work streams that we focus on, and the ones that are in darker shades are the six priorities that you identified at your retreat on January 26th. And so obviously, the quote is there showing that these are areas of focus for the city and because they're areas of focus, they're areas that we are working on and plan to continue to work on. So the plan is organized around eight key strategies. So these strategies were identified as the eight main things that we plan, we have been working on, and we plan to continue to work on to help drive towards a data-driven culture. So just to go through a few, or to go through all of them quickly and to identify a few key points. So the first one, SAMOstat, is something I'll talk a little bit more towards the end of the presentation as well. SAMOstat is Santa Monica's version of a best practices management program that started in New York City in 1987 in the Police Department, known as CompStat. City of Baltimore was the first city to use it across the city and all departments starting in 1997. But essentially, it's a way of, once you've identified the outcomes and the goals that you want to achieve, it's a way of engaging the internal services and other stakeholders in the city to monitor and track progress and make management decisions. It's something that we've been using for about two and a half years in the city, first with the strategic goals, and now with the framework priorities. The framework is obviously something you obviously know well, that is a part of the budget. This is basically our strategic visioning document. It identifies the high-level, are people better off type outcomes. The framework priority development, that's something we've been working on over the last several months since you identified the framework priorities last January, and then they became a part of the budget. Each of these has a plan that we're working very closely with all the different stakeholders to implement, and these plans are actually are going through the SAMOstat process right now. We have two that are online, a third that's going online on Thursday, and the other three will be online by January. Engaging external stakeholders is something that is really important, that we've actually been really focused on in the last few months. At one of your council meetings, I believe on June 5th, a few of you brought up the idea of having a performance advisory committee, so I'm proud to mention that we did launch it. Yesterday was actually the deadline. We received several applications. We're working now to review them with the goal of making decisions on appointments by mid-October and having our first meeting at the end of October. And this will be a way that staff and community members will work together in helping to advise the city on setting, setting priorities and setting ideas as part of the framework. Engaging internal stakeholders, the primary way we do this is through our training program. We've trained over 300 city employees in basic performance management. We're working to develop higher levels of the training as well. Performance-based budgeting is obviously something that we presented quite a bit this spring as we developed it for the first time. We're now working on the reporting for this. We're working on a system of internally reporting on data towards the metrics that are part of the budget, and the aggregate data for the first year will be included in the exception year budget that you'll be seeing about a year from now, a little less than a year from now. Communication and transparency, the main way we've done this is through our dashboard, which has had over 25,000 hits since it launched on April 2nd. We also work with our Office of Communications to basically make sure that we're branding things, using social media, using our website effectively. And then finally, internal consulting is an area that we have been focusing on but want to spend more time on in the next few months. This summer, four staff members, including myself, attended a training offered by the city and county of Denver called the Black Belt through Peak Academy, which basically is equivalent to a Lean Six Sigma program. So this is something that we do as departments would like assistance in process reengineering and things like that. It's also a program that we run and something we want to continue to grow and ramp up in the coming years. This slide just shows the four cycle, four phases of the cycle of performance management. So, and I'll show you a few examples in a second, but these basically show the different stages in development of a performance management program. They're based on project management strategies as well. So the idea that we start by strategizing, we engage stakeholders, figure out what it is we need to do, conceptualize it, we then develop it, we develop the materials, develop a plan of action, we then implement it, and it's never really done. We're always monitoring and working to improve things. So this is an example, SAMOstat again is one of the eight key strategies. This slide just shows, in the plan, we identify what the purpose is of each strategy, why it's important, we identify what the outcome is we want to achieve, and then we have a few outputs. These are basically our process metrics that help us know whether or not we're essentially being effective and efficient in how we're implementing things. These next three slides I'll go through relatively quickly, but this actually just shows you what the plan actually looks like. So this, I'm going to walk you through SAMOstat, basically showing what it looks like for this past year, this current year, and the year after that. So basically, what we do is we identify a series of milestones, things that we want to work on. We then identify the months that we plan to work on it, and it's color-coded based on the phase of the performance management cycle that we're working on. So this past year, we basically worked to continue to launch SAMOstat for the strategic goals, and then as strategic goals shifted into the framework priority structure, we began to shift and conceptualize and plan how to implement that. This current year, we're basically launching, as I mentioned, through December and into January, we're going to be launching SAMOstats for all six priorities. Then as that gets going, we'll monitor them to make sure they're working to assess effectiveness. Then at the end of next year, we'll basically plan to do a survey to see what changes and modifications we might work. And then the year after, which is the second year in the current two-year budget cycle that we're in, we'll basically again be monitoring and managing the process and then start to plan as part of the next budget cycle what refinements need to be made. This, obviously, this room looks familiar. This is actually where we do our SAMOstat meetings. They're typically on a monthly basis, some vary. All the internal services, representatives of all the internal services sit on the dais, and the idea is that we're engaging them. It's meant to be a system where basically questions are posed and then it's really, it really just doesn't begin and end when the meeting starts and ends. It's something that really is meant to be a process through which we're identifying what some of the challenges are and things we need to work on to make sure we're on track to reach our targets and achieve our goals. And the four tenants of the stat approach are in the middle: accurate and timely data, effective tactics, rapid deployment, and relentless follow-up and assessment. This last slide is a photo, or second to last slide, excuse me, is a photo of my office wall. Took me a little while, a few months into realize it was a whiteboard, so I'm glad it is. I had a whiteboard paint, so I was able to do this. I just want to acknowledge too that this is a plan that took quite a bit of work around many different people. And I acknowledge my analyst, David Gardenier, who's here today, who played an incredible role in helping to develop this. But this slide is really here to basically show you that this isn't something that we just finished and is on a shelf somewhere. We actually use on a routine basis internally to manage and to make sure we're on track with all of our implementation goals. We also, we did present this when it was in development to the department head group, and we'll present it to them on a quarterly basis. I'm also happy to give you updates whenever you would like them on this. And it's something that, again, we plan to use to manage towards the achievement of an outcome of a, of a city government that uses data to drive decisions. So again, I just want to thank you for having a few minutes today to speak about this and certainly happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
All right, looks like we have one from Councilmember Morena.
Hi, thanks for coming. Just a quick question. I know that under the key strategies, you have the performance-based budgeting. How does that overlay with your calendar? And do you, will you flush that out? And can we expect to see that in the 2021 budget cycle?
Yeah, so it's a great question. So it's something that, so obviously, there is a plan also that runs kind of concurrent to this one with mostly overlap. It's a little, one more year, it goes one more year past this plan, a couple, yeah, one more year past this plan. But yeah, there is overlap and connection, and basically all the work that's in the plan related to the budget is work that's been mapped out as part of that process.
So then you tie specific budgets to specific performance measures and then go through a full cycle to determine whether or not the funding was appropriate?
Yeah, so what we, what we are doing right now is, for this two-year budget cycle, we've developed, staff developed metrics for all the different activities that are in the budget. The first year, they're primarily baseline metrics. After one year, they'll be setting targets for them. Then for the next year, they'll be reporting against those targets, and hopefully, when we get into the next two-year budget cycle, we'll be able to start using data to drive recommendations and decisions. So the plan is for that to be about a six-year period to be fully at that point, but we expect that we'll start to be able to use it roughly at least the next time we come before you.
Awesome, thank you.
So I have a question. So one of the budgetary priorities that we set back at our retreat was engaged in thriving community. And we know, for example, that the entire country of New Zealand has created a policy where the notion of well-being permeates their entire budget. Specifically on that particular priority, can you describe some of the work we've done?
Yeah, so there was a plan, obviously, that was created towards that priority. The SAMOstat meetings for that group will be focused on in November. And essentially, what we, what we plan to do with it is basically use that as a lens for basically reviewing existing programs and activities to essentially, to make, through an equitable lens, to make sure that there are programs that we are reaching full capacity in terms of how they're equitable and reaching every corner of the community to make sure that everyone is able to thrive. So it is something that we've been working with that team to develop, and then about two months, we'll be launching it. The plan is available and online, and it does focus on engagement activities, but it also does include a substantial list of activities that a variety of different departments run right now that are really designed to engage thriving across the community.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Well, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Dodd, so much for the presentation. We appreciate it. All right, and now we're going to go to our next item, Ms. Anderson Warren.
Next, we have a proclamation declaring September 15th through October 15th, 2019 as Hispanic Heritage Month.
All right, and Councilmember Hara has agreed to help me out on this one, so we're going to head down to the lectern. No, as usual, Carla's ahead of us all. So what we're doing tonight is recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September 15th to October 15th. We have representatives of Familias Latinas Unidas, or FLU, Gloria Garcia, Arcadio Cruz, and Elena Hernandez. You can all wave. Good, all right. We have a proclamation here. I'm only going to read part of it in brief, and then I'm going to ask Councilmember Hara to make some statements. En Espanol, which I do not speak, so that we can be as inclusionary as we always strive to be. So whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the culture, contributions, and heritage of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America; and whereas in 1968, the 90th Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to issue a proclamation annually designating the weeks, including September 15th and 16th, as National Hispanic Heritage Week. President Ronald Reagan then expanded the honor proclaiming the first Hispanic Heritage Month in 1988. And whereas today, in the United States, 57.5 million people, or 18% of the American population, are of Hispanic or Latino ancestry; in Santa Monica, approximately 16% of our city's population are of Hispanic or Latino ancestry; and whereas Santa Monica has a rich history of embracing diversity, equity, and acting with compassion, the city has proudly promoted equitable policies that protect our residents, our environment, communities, and a way of life that depends on tolerance and inclusiveness. And whereas in 2017, the Santa Monica City Council adopted a resolution embracing diversity, rejecting hate and discrimination, clarifying the city's role in enforcing federal immigration law, and promoting an environment in which fear and intimidation do not chill cooperation with local law enforcement and other first responders. And whereas Familias Latinas Unidas, or FLU, which is comprised of parents and families involved at Virginia Avenue Park, embodies the two, excuse me, 2019 Hispanic Heritage Month theme of service by being advocates and leaders for preserving Latino culture in Santa Monica through sponsoring events such as the annual Mexican Independence Day, Dia de los Muertos, Las Posadas, and Cesar Chavez Celebration, as well as spearheading forums that address issues of community concern, such as the Know Your Rights Immigration Series, and educational presentations for student success. Now therefore, I, Gleam Davis, Mayor of the City of Santa Monica, on behalf of all my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim in Santa Monica, September 15th through October 15th, 2009, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and I encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the culture, contributions, and achievements of Hispanic Americans. Councilmember Hara? Trying to figure out if I should read the entire proclamation again, so, okay. Aquí vamos, muy buenas noches, muchas gracias por estar aquí presentes, les agradezco mucho. El mes del patrimonio hispano es una oportunidad para reconocer y celebrar la cultura, las contribuciones, y el patrimonio de los ciudadanos estadounidenses cuyos antepasados vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, América Central, y América del Sur. Y en 1968, el Congreso 90 autorizó el presidente Lyndon B. Johnson a emitir una proclamación anual que designa la semana incluida el 15 y 16 de septiembre como Semana Nacional de la Herencia Hispana. El presidente Ronald Reagan amplió el honor proclamando el primer mes del patrimonio hispano en 1988. Y el Consejo Nacional de Gerentes del Programa de Empleo Hispano anunció el tema del mes del patrimonio hispano de 2019. Hispanoamericanos, una historia de servir a nuestra nación. El tema nos invita a reflexionar sobre el servicio, las contribuciones, y los rollos que los hispanoamericanos han jugado en la historia de los Estados Unidos. Y en los Estados Unidos hoy, 57.5 millones de personas, o el 18% de la población estadounidense, son de ascendencia hispana o latina. En Santa Mónica, aproximadamente, el 16% de la población de nuestra ciudad es de ascendencia hispana o latina. Y Santa Mónica tiene una rica historia de abarcar la diversidad, la equidad, y actuar con compasión. La ciudad ha proveído con orgullo políticas equitativas que protegen a nuestros residentes, el medio ambiente, las comunidades, y la forma de vida que depende de la tolerancia y la inclusión. Y en 2017, el Consejo Municipal de Santa Mónica adoptó una resolución que abarca la diversidad, rechaza el odio y las discriminaciones, aclara el papel de la ciudad en la aplicación de la ley federal de inmigración, y promueve un ambiente en el que el miedo y la intimidación no desalientan la cooperación con la política local y otros primeros respondedores locales. Y Familias Latinas Unidas, o FLU, que se compone de padres y familias involucradas en el Parque Virginia, encarna el tema del servicio del mes de la herencia hispana de 2019, por ser defensor y líder de preservación de la cultura latina en Santa Mónica a través de eventos patrocinados como el Día de Independencia Mexicana, Dia de los Muertos, Las Posadas, y la celebración de Cesar Chavez, así como encabezar foros que abordan temas de interés comunitario como de serie de inmigración, sabiendo sus derechos, y representaciones educativas pero para el éxito de los estudiantes. Ahora, por consiguiente... Gleam Davis, okay. Este, perdón. Alcalde de la Ciudad de Santa Mónica, en nombre de los miembros del Consejo Municipal, proclama el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre del 2019 como el mes de la herencia hispana en la Ciudad de Santa Mónica, y alentamos a todos los residentes a que reconozcan y celebren la cultura, las contribuciones, y los logros de los hispanoamericanos. Muchas gracias. [applause] Mi nombre es Gloria García. A nombre de nuestro grupo de Familias Latinas Unidas, les agradezco este reconocimiento. Nos sentimos muy honrados y felices. So, good evening, councilmembers. I am, I'm sorry, Gloria García, a member of Grupo Familia Latinas Unidas. I want to thank you so much for recognizing and honoring us on this lovely day. We thank the city of Santa Monica for recognizing and for giving us...
We thank the city of Santa Monica for recognizing and for giving us your support through Virginia Avenue Park, Carla, and all of the staff that is always there with us.
Muchas gracias por reconocer a nuestra comunidad latina, y también quiero expresar mi agradecimiento y orgullo por nuestras líderes latinas, la señora Ana, que queremos mucho, Liz, que también es muy importante, Irma, y otros más. Muchas gracias.
So I also want to thank some of our leaders in our community, as Councilmember Hara and Liz, who is here, and also Irma Carranza, who are leaders in our community, and I want to thank them for their great work.
All right, now I'm going to take a picture. I'm going to pop this out. Nobody wants a picture of an envelope? Why don't you all come down? Because since I think there's so few of them.
It's realmente un honor estar aquí con todos ustedes para celebrar este mes de la herencia hispana. Los hispanos y los latinoamericanos reflejamos muchas culturas, nacionalidades, y una diversidad de experiencia. De hecho, las referencias a hispanos y latinoamericanos pueden describir a los estadounidenses, que son inmigrantes, refugiados, recientes, así como aquellos cuyas familias estuvieron aquí antes incluso de que existieran los Estados Unidos. Como grupo de... como grupo, los latinos hemos hecho contribuciones significativas a nuestra economía, incluso nuevos negocios, crear empleos, y utilizando nuestros poderes adquisitivos como consumidores. Luchamos para que los jóvenes hispanos y latinoamericanos de hoy sean nuestros médicos, abogados, ingenieros, empresarios, funcionarios, electores, y líderes del mañana. Claramente, hay desafío por delante, pero también hay enormes oportunidades en el horizonte. El mes de la herencia hispana es un buen momento para reunir el impulso, para hacer un balance de la historia y evaluar tanto las oportunidades como los desafíos que se enfrenta actualmente en nuestra comunidad hispana y Latinoamérica en general. It's really a pleasure to be here with all of you to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month of the month. Hispanic and Latinoamerica reflect many cultures, nationality, and adversity of experience. In fact, the reference to Hispanic and Latinoamerican can describe Americans who are recent immigrants and refugees, as well as those who whose family were here before there was even a United States of America. As a group of Hispanic, have we made significant contribution to our economy by starting new business, creating jobs, and utilizing their purchases' power as consumers? Today, young Hispanic and Latinoamericans will be our teachers, our doctors, lawyers, engineers, business leaders, and elected official and community leaders of tomorrow. There is no doubt that young Hispanic and Latinoamerican will continue to contribute to great number to the success of this nation. Clearly, there are challenges ahead, but there are tremendous opportunities in the horizon. Hispanic Heritage Month is a good time to gather the momentum to take stock of historic and assess both the opportunity and challenges currently facing the Hispanic and Latinoamerican community as whole.
[applause] If just the three of them, it makes sense for us all to be on one level.
I miss the Yankees.
Mr. Cole, you're in the queue. Did you have a comment?
Yes, not for any formal recognition, but I know that our city really values its sister-city relationships with our three sister cities, one of which is HAM Germany. And we have two exchange students here in the audience with Jeff Jarrow, who is the chair of the Sister City Committee, and I just thought they might simply come and say hello to the city council.
Oh, of course. Welcome.
Julia Micker and Louisa Steinman.
They'll come in.
I don't speak German anymore.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Yeah, we both are the interns at the Chamber of Commerce now. We were here for about four weeks, and yeah, we are really thankful to be here in this beautiful city, Santa Monica, and yeah. So many greetings from Germany.
Well, wonderful. Well, thank you. We're so glad to have you. Councilmember McEwen.
I just want to say greetings back to you, and be careful about falling in love with Santa Monica. I worked for many years in our school district, and one of our beloved music teachers, Kirsten Durst, is from HAM. She came here like you did as an exchange student, and she's still here.
We will see you.
Well, we're so glad you could join us tonight, and thank you so much. We really do appreciate all the work that our Sister Cities organization does, and the fact that they bring us lovely people like you to come and get used to our city and see what we have to offer, and we look forward to exchanging that opportunity soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oops, I got to go back on script now. Okay, now we're getting to the lease fund. Ms. Anderson Warren?
Does any councilmember have any brief reports to give on travel since the last meeting?
Looks like Councilmember McEwen's in the queue.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I attended the Rail Evolution Transit Conference in Vancouver, where this year's focus was on equity in transit and how to preserve neighborhoods against transit gentrification. Highlights I remember particularly include tours of the city of Vancouver themed around making a city walkable and equitable, and creating successful public places to augment public transit. I also participated in workshops about first and last mile micro-mobility. By the way, they don't have scooters yet in Vancouver. They do have bike share, and they will have scooters soon, I believe. And also, how to elevate a community's cultural assets in public place-making, which I think is really important, given the celebration we just had of the heritage we enjoy here in Santa Monica.
All right, and guess what? Councilmember Hara went on a trip, and she brought chocolate back for me to share with people who had been sharing their travels. So you're the big winner tonight.
Post-travel chocolate, thank you.
That's right, always good. No doubt walked it off in Vancouver, so. Wonderful. All right, the next item, Ms. Anderson Warren.
Next is the consent calendar. All items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion, and you have three requests to speak.
All right, I'm going to call all the names at once. Please line up against the wall. Denise Barton, Xena Josephs, and Ed Harker.
Good evening. I'm curious, with the application that will allow city staff and homeless service providers to track information on a limited cohort of persons identified as frequent users of city services being used to intermediately or permanently house these persons outside the city, I also think it's necessary to say, look at the bloated amount of overpaid city staff on the issue of homelessness. For some reason, the city thinks paying all this city staff to provide services to keep the homeless on the streets is helping the homeless, instead of cutting staff costs and providing housing. In ending, one would also have to wonder, since you claim many of the homeless are dealing with mental health issues, wouldn't a permanent ADE person within the city possibly be able to help the homeless as well, instead of appointing an ADE person with no job description who you have, when you have an actual ADE complaint, tells you to get a lawyer?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Josephs.
Regarding Agenda Item 3A, the Barker Hangar 10-year lease, I emailed the airport manager and asked him on which airport commission agenda this item had appeared, and he replied, quote, "We usually do not bring in front of the commission lease negotiations, only commercial operations permits." Last year, the city signed a 10-year lease agreement with Santa Monica College for the Airport Arts Campus on the west end of Airport Avenue, and I doubt that the airport commission saw that lease agreement either. So therefore, I request that even if the commissioners are not allowed to make recommendations, that their agendas at least include the lease agreements as information items in the airport manager's report each month, so that they will know what's going on at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harker.
Hello, I'm Ed Harker. I've met several of you and written all of you. I'm speaking about Item 3E, Santa Monica Municipal Code 4.27.040. First of all, I want to thank you for being so responsive to the issues that are involved with the Ellis Act abuses in Santa Monica. It's very serious. But I guess I'm confused on 3E. It ends with the phrase, discourage owners from evicting tenants for the purpose of rerenting rent-controlled units at market rate rents. Is that referring to... What discourages owners from doing that is that the Ellis Act itself, which restricts receiving rents for five years. So I'm not sure if that's what a $1,000 fine has to do with that. If it's a $1,000 fine for failure to obtain an occupancy permit prior to reoccupancy, that's great. But it's not if an owner who wants to go ahead and rent at market rate before he is allowed to by the law, I don't think $1,000 is nearly enough. So I'm not sure what the intention of this change is. It says rerenting means collecting rent, so I assume that means after five years. If that means rerenting for money within the restricted period, that's different. So I'm just trying to clarify what $1,000 is going to deter anybody from doing, other than being late with getting a permit. It seems to me for some, for an owner who's intending to occupy with tenants paying rent under the table, $1,000 is nothing. If that's the intention, I'm sorry if I'm having it mixed up.
Thank you, Mr. Harker. Okay, that concludes the public hearing. The matter's now before the council. Councilmember Winter?
I'd like to pull Item 3A, please.
All right, 3A. Any other items that councilmembers want to pull?
That's why my name's on the queue, yeah.
All right.
I'd like to pull 3E.
3A and 3E.
3E.
All right.
I'd like to move the consent calendar. Mine is 3A and 3E.
Moved by O'Day, seconded by Morena, the consent calendar, except for Items 3A and 3E. May we have a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson Warren?
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously, 7-0. We'll start with Item 3A.
3A is to execute lease agreement with Santa Monica Air Center for land at 3021 and 3025 Airport Avenue and auxiliary storage structures.
So I'm entirely supportive of extending this lease. What I wanted to ask the city manager, or maybe the public works directors lurking in the back of the room, is there any reason, as Ms. Joseph suggested, that council couldn't give direction that some of these leases be at least notified to the airport commission so they kept abreast of everything that's going on at the airport?
I don't see any reason why that couldn't be done. The reality is that we've just been through renewals of virtually all of the leases on the airport sites, so there will be fairly rare occasions.
Sure.
But absolutely, there's no reason why it couldn't be, unless there's an information item. Of course, there's always scope creep, in which a commission which is purely advisory begins to advise on lease terms. I think that's probably a step that the council should be clear is not where we're going.
I like your idea, just that it might be in the airport manager's, airport director's update, so that they just know what's going on. Because I imagine the airport commissioner, and someone comes up to you and say, hey, I hear we just redid that lease, you go, well, I didn't know. You just get egg on your face. We don't want that to happen. So with that, I will make two motions, one of which is to move approval of Item 3A, and then make a motion after we vote on that, that we give direction to staff to start including information about these leases to the airport.
All right, let's start with the first one.
I'll second that.
All right, 3A, moved by Winter, seconded by McEwen. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, 3A passes unanimously, and now Councilmember Winter, you wanted to make a motion to give direction?
Yeah, that going forward, when leases or other new arrangements at the airport come up that aren't necessarily under the direct purview of the airport commission, that at least an effort be made to have the airport director advise the commission that these things are coming up.
Second.
All right, moved by Winter, seconded by Hara. I think we can do that as a voice vote.
Clarifying that is information for... It's an information item, there's no discussion, there's no approval involved.
Correct, there's no recommendation, the council no debating the terms, et cetera, just so that they know.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. All right, Item 3E, please.
Item 3E is code enforcement fine increases.
Councilmember McEwen.
So I asked this to be pulled for a simple reason. Just in case anybody's holding their breath, I do intend to move the item, move the staff recommendation. But I just want to point out, this changes a number of fines. On the way to City Hall tonight, on KNX News Radio, I heard a story about the fact that this changes the fines on short-term rentals, which was important to people in the region. But for people here in Santa Monica who have been Ellis'd out of buildings that then get reoccupied, there are some changes in here and the penalties there. Mr. Harker was kind enough to come down. He's one of a number of residents who have advised me and the council over time of some of what I'll say may be happening in the community, because there are still ongoing investigations, and none of what we're doing tonight has to do with those investigations specifically. But he raised a couple of questions about what this applies to and the amounts. So as far as what this applies to, I'll turn to the city attorney. My understanding is that what these fines apply to is defined in our municipal code in the ordinances that have to do with these fines, not by what is stated in the staff report. So the staff report's not the determinative factor, and if we wanted to change what the fines applied to, we'd have to modify the underlying ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct. The staff report and the item before you tonight are raising these fines, they're not changing the underlying municipal code provisions.
I also want to point out that the increase in these fines is long overdue and is substantial, but as our speaker and other people have pointed out, these still may not be enough to deter people from behavior that threatens our rent-controlled housing. So I'd like to ask the... Well, I'm going to first make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation. Let's get that done on 3E.
All right, on 3A, moved by McEwen, seconded by Winter. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara? Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously. I think Councilmember McEwen, you also had something else?
Well, yeah, Mr. Harker and others have pointed out that these may not yet be enough to deter some of the behavior we'd like to see stopped that is threatening our residents and our rent-controlled housing. So I'd like to move that council direct staff to explore what further improvements might be made in the future, and come back to us if those explorations appear promising.
Second, moved by McEwen, seconded by Davis, just direction to staff to look for some changes to our statutes to further deter.
And let me give you an example, there've been recommendations made, for instance, that some of these acts be made criminal. I'm not sure that municipal law allows us to impose a criminal penalty in these cases, that's something I'd like to see explored.
Or whether it would be a good idea, but we can certainly explore options.
Or should the penalties be tied to the difference in rent, or the amount of money made by not following the law? Or should the penalty be assessed not on a per instance basis, but on a per day basis? There are all sorts of things that could be done.
Right, and with the direction that if staff find something promising, they can bring that back to us. All right, that's a voice vote, moved by McEwen, seconded by Davis. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, that concludes the consent calendar.
Next, we have Item 7A, is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Santa Monica Municipal Code 4.36.020, to improve clarity and add an additional basis for payment of permanent tenant relocation expenses.
Move adoption?
Second.
Moved by Winterer, seconded by McEwen. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously.
Next, we have Item 7B, which is a second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending and revising Chapter 6.20 of the Santa Monica Municipal Code to strengthen regulation of home sharing and vacation rentals.
Move 7B. All right, moved by Winterer, seconded by Hamerich. May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Mayor Davis.
Yes, that also passes unanimously.
7C is second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Article 8 of Santa Monica Municipal Code by adopting the 2019 California Energy Code and 2019 California Green Building Standard Code, and the Santa Monica Local Amendments of such codes to require higher energy performance for newly constructed buildings.
Move 7C. Moved by Hamerich, seconded by Hara. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously.
Item 7D has been continued, we move on to Item 7E. Introduction for first reading of an interim zoning ordinance extending interim zoning ordinance 2569 CCS and 2572 CCS for interim changes to development standards in the R1 single-unit zoning district pending adoption of permanent revisions to the R1 development standards. And you currently have three requests to speak.
All right, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, Tony Kim, City Planning Division. The R1 update item will be heard by the council on October 22nd. In the meantime, the R1 interim zoning ordinance is set to expire on November 15th. This was the IZO that the council adopted in February of 2018 in response to community concerns related to the construction and the size of new homes. What that IZO did was reduce the maximum building height to 28 feet in the R1 district. It limited parcel coverage to 50% overall, with a maximum 20% on the second story. It required that upper-level stepbacks be measured from the second story. It limited the second-story balconies and decks to an aggregate of 400 square feet, and it eliminated accessory dwelling units from parcel coverage calculations. The proposed, the IZO, as I mentioned, is set to expire on November 15th. Staff is proposing the IZO be extended to December 31st of 2019. When staff returns in October with the R1 updates, staff will be proposing that those standards become effective on January 1st, hence the need to extend the IZO to the end of the year. With that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, do we have any questions, Mr. Kim? All right, not seeing any questions, we'll move to the public comment. We have two speakers, is it Mr. or Ms. Finer? I'm sorry, I can't read the first name, Mr. Finer? All right, and Owen Gubbins, who has two minutes donated by Sally Gubbins. Sally, can you just raise your hand, so I can see you? Thank you so much. All right, welcome, Mr. Finer.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for having me. I don't have an agenda, I didn't write a speech for you. I'm, I come here as a new resident to Santa Monica that was kind of blindsided by all of this, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around this. I understand that the mansions that are being built north of Montana are creating, you know, they're changing the neighborhood, in a way. My wife, Michelle, and I are looking to build a house. We just recently, two weeks ago, bought a property here on Harvard, almost on Montana, looking to demolish that home. And we have four children, and the laws that you're creating and changing, you talk about inclusion, you talk about being thoughtful and inviting to your community, we would like to be invited to your community, and we would like to have some change in the law that allows to actually look at the actual situation of the individual or family that are building a home, and then what they actually need as far as square footage, let's say for our, for the lot that we bought, we're going to have some limits there. I think it's, it's very easy to just strike down, you know, a hammer on saying, hey, it's 50% of the lot, here are your limits, and, because we want more shade, or, you know, or we want more sun for our neighbors, or whatever, whatever the reasons are. But at the same time, there is a real need for real families out there, that maybe we're the small exception to the rule where we have four children and not two, and we'd like to have a bedroom for every child, and we see the problems of them now living in an apartment, and the six of us are sharing three bedrooms. And I just, before you allow these things to happen, I want you to, I'm asking that you give some thought to the implications to everyone, not just maybe even the majority, but even the minorities like us that have to then deal with those consequences. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gubbins.
Hey, good evening, council, Owen Gubbins. Just following up on my email correspondence from earlier in the week, you know, like the Finers, we have more than the average number of kids, we've got three kids, and we're, you know, in a one bathroom, small home right now. We're looking to redo our house, and the 20% parcel coverage limitation on the second floor is really quite tight. It's limiting, you know, the size of the bedrooms for each of our girls, and I think it's just removing that flexibility that we would like in terms of layout of bedrooms, potentially allowing desks in each of the bedrooms for studying, you know, there are eight, six, and three, so, you know, they've got a ways to go. And so we think this is, is a small tweak that would help, help folks. I've talked to city staff a little bit about this throughout this update process, and, you know, we are hearing from, or it seems like that the community's hearing from a number of different people about this 20% limitation, that it's really quite, quite And so we're looking for, for a little bit of, bit more room. The request was that you consider 22.5%, with no increase in overall parcel coverage. And we do know that it is, is late in the process, but we still think that this would, would help folks like us who are kind of in the middle of the process and wanting to do something sooner rather than later, you know, obviously this interim ordinance was adopted back in February of last year, which, you know, is, is quite a ways from now. So, you know, we do, we would encourage you to consider it. I did look back at the meeting video when you first adopted these standards, and I know it was 2:00 AM and it was very late, and you had something major beforehand, but at the same time, I think the standards came up in an email, or, or from, from maybe a collection of residents, and, you know, there was talk at that time about vetting the standards and, and taking it, taking a closer look at the interim standards. So I think, I think now is as good a time as any, especially for those folks, again, with the, the substandard lots who are being faced with this, this, this 20% limitation, which again, just makes it that little bit tight to fit everything on that second floor, all the kids, all the desks, all the closets and whatnot. And for us, our lot tapers in as well, so it's, it's difficult to do kind of first-floor addition, just because the backyard is pretty small as it is, and so building into the backyard would just eliminate basically our, our private outdoor, outdoor space, and with three kids, you obviously want to try to maintain as much of that as possible. So that's my request, I hope you consider it. Thank you.
All right, I think we have some questions, first from Councilmember Winterer.
Sure.
So, Mr. Gubbins, so I understand your concerns, but doesn't it make sense to potentially address those on October 22nd, when we revise the permanent standards going forward?
I'll be back then.
Yeah, I mean, because this interim ordinance only extends the current regulations to the end of this year, and then January 1st, it's, you know, it's a different set of standards.
Right, right, no, and I've been to...
So are you actually saying you think we should make an adjustment to the interim standards, or you're just sort of setting the table for when you come back October 22nd?
Um, I mean, potential, I, I would like you to make a change to the interim standards, because I think, I think we're probably ready to go under the interim standards. They'll be in effect for at least the next four months, or three and a half months. And who knows, you know, with the, the new state laws, there's, I believe, three bills that the governor will sign, they're pretty complex. While I understand you're scheduled to consider it on October 22nd, that date, you know, may well be pushed. This interim ordinance, like interim ordinances before it, could be in effect for another six, nine, 12 months.
But my recollection from what at least the planning commission recommended that we do is that they're recommending an expansion of the amount of second-story coverage.
To 22.5%, so what I'm asking for today, except I don't think their standard made sense, because they were limiting parcel coverage to 45%, which would be 22.5% on the, you'd have a second floor...
So let me ask you this, though.
Exactly the same size as the first floor.
We currently have, and I've thought about this, and talked to staff about it, we currently, right now, have plans that are being submitted under the old standards, plans that are being submitted under the interim zoning standards, and then we will have plans that are submitted under the new standards. If we change the IZO now, we then have a set of plans that are submitted under the revised IZO, which just sounds like a lot for planners and inspectors and everybody to, it's the whole of close to this review process, to keep up with potentially four different sets of standards that might be in place by the beginning of next year.
Right, and I guess my response to that is, this is a very small, minor adjustment, it's possibly 200 square feet on the second floor. So, you know, you can obtain this through the modification and waiver process, which again, staff would have to administer regardless of ordinance that's in effect, you know, the plans that are being reviewed would be subject to the modification or exact waiver, whatever that applicant obtained. So, I mean, yeah, that's why I really didn't want to rock the boat much with this request. I, I thought about it and suggested something that I think is, is pretty innocuous.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Gubbins, for your thoughts.
An accommodation.
I think we understand where you're coming from.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other, Councilmember here, did you, all right, oh, thank you, Mr. Gubbins, that's it.
Sure.
Thank you. So now the matter is before the council. Councilmember McEwen.
I think we need to respect and consider the family entreaties that, that we heard tonight. But it's important to realize that this whole matter didn't come from the council, it was brought to us by the neighborhoods who were concerned about changes they were seeing. Now, we were supposed to address the entire ordinance tonight, and we're not doing that, or we're extending the interim ordinance temporarily, but because we announced ahead of time that we weren't going to deal with the entire ordinance tonight, we don't have a full room here, which I'm sure we would, and we will in a month from now. So there are a lot of people who have skin in this game, and I think they all deserve to be heard before we make changes. And while the changes proposed may be very well thought out, they haven't been vetted in the community, and people had no idea they were being proposed tonight to come down and speak to them. So I think we, we need to respect the process while also honoring the needs of these families, and I will move that we introduce the IZO extension as submitted.
All right, moved by McEwen, seconded by Hamerich, Councilmember Winterer.
Oh, that's all, please.
Oh. Are there any other comments on Item 7E? Councilmember Morena.
Just so I'm clear, we truly believe that we'll hear this in a couple of weeks, right? I mean, if this family is ready to go, it seems unfair, in the event that it gets dragged out, that they become a casualty in that process. So do we have a, is, is the next meeting a true date, or in two weeks, a true date?
Well, why don't I turn to staff? I, I think it's, October 22nd is a firm date?
We were ready to come tonight, but we wanted, as has been alluded to in the public testimony, to ensure that the pending legislation did not significantly affect the recommendations of the planning commission.
I believe the governor has to sign or not sign by October 13th, is that the date? So by the 22nd, we'll know.
Yeah, and it's not clear how much, if at all, that legislation will affect the recommendations, but I think, as is prudent, the city attorney's office wanted to review them, and we think that makes sense, rather than go through this all again, if those bills are signed into law, and they would have an impact on the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion by McEwen, a second from Hamerich, on Item 7E to adopt the, or to extend the IZO. May we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously, 7 to 0.
Next, we have Item 7F, which is introduction and first reading of an ordinance adding Section 4.08.820 of the Santa Monica Municipal Code to prohibit the making of false statements to the city. And you have two requests, three requests to speak.
Counsel, on August 13th, the city council directed staff to take steps to improve the efficacy of laws protecting tenants and affordable housing in Santa Monica. Among other things, we were specifically asked to review the scope of false claims provisions in the Santa Monica Municipal Code. What we learned in that review is that the city did not have a generally applicable false statements against the government provision, and had only a few provisions that actually dealt with false statements made in the city's jurisdiction. In response, we're proposing an ordinance that would follow federal law in prohibiting false statements to the government, to the extent that they are knowingly made and material, that is non-trivial and having a natural tendency to influence official city action. We did, excuse me, we did receive some questions in response to the proposed ordinance, and did want to articulate that were it to be adopted, the city attorney's office would also follow the federal government in implementing guidance as to when such enforcement actions would be brought, and limiting enforcement actions to those statements that affect the operation or integrity of the city government, such as false statements made on official city applications, or in response to investigations by law enforcement officers. And that is the proposed ordinance that is before you today.
All right, do we have any clarifying questions? Not seeing any, we will go to the public comment. Our speakers are Denise Barton, Jerry Rubin, and Ed Harker.
Good evening. I'm concerned about whose judgment will be determining who's making false statements to the city, or would this be another way to settle, to stifle the public's right to free speech? Or what about the city council and staff submissions of facts and staff reports, like the increase in crime in homeless people within our city by bringing the expo line here? And would this affect the public's ability to give a different perspective on items at the city council meetings? Or would it be, or would it be if it differs from what the city or city council's vision would make that it a false statement? I ask only because in applications, and the staff report clearly states, this ordinance applies to false statements made in any manner within the jurisdiction of the city. I don't think this is what it's for, but I support it if it... of the city. I don't think this is what it's for, but I support it if it's for, to get city staff and the city council to stop making false statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Rubin.
Uh, thank you very, very much. Uh, Mayor Davis, Jerry Rubin, Santa Monica. I'll be very brief. I uh support this. I think it uh, you know, honesty is always the best policy. I fully entrust the city attorney's office to work out a fair and responsible procedure for this. Uh, I imagine if it applied to Donald Trump tweets, though, I think there'd be some real question there. So there, you know, I think this is a good thing, and I support, support it.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Mr. Harker?
Hello again. Uh, I used to live in Ocean Park on Third Street and was evicted by the Ellis Act. I was there for thirty-two years, and I have lots of friends in the neighborhood. And a number of them have made good friends with the current occupants of the Ellis Building. And I have it on confidence, this is hearsay, of course, it means nothing, but had the occupants known they could go to jail, they never would have signed their declarations. They knew what they were doing, but there were no consequences. So the thousand-dollar fine and the threat of jail is very fine for the occupants to sign the occupancy permit. But the landlord, the owner stands to make six hundred thousand dollars in this period. I think the fine needs to be proportional to the the crime, maybe felony, because this is a serious white-collar crime, in my opinion. So, um, false statements is absolutely critical. I really commend city attorney and staff for bringing this to a, to this conclusion, and I hope you pass it very much. And I hope that it applies proportionally to the um the effect of the, of the false statement. If it's a false statement about a parking ticket, or if it's one thing, if it's a false statement about collecting ten thousand dollars a month for five years, that's a completely different matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harker. That concludes the public testimony. The matter is now before the council. Councilmember Winter.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second. All right. We have the staff recommendation moved by Winter, seconded by Himmelrich, Councilmember McEwen. Oh, you removed yourself. Councilmember Hara.
I just want to make sure that um in the enforcement piece, that there won't be any abuse of um of maybe just coming up with somebody asking, you know, what is your name, and you giving another name, and then you're going to um uh give power to others that might just abuse it. So I just want to make sure that um, I guess, or maybe have clarification as to the fact that, you know, this um action is precisely for what we are definitely talking about and direction that we're given. Um, I I I'm just hoping that that clarification might be there, and not necessarily that it's only implied.
All right. Um, Councilmember Moreno.
Those are my similar along, along the same lines are my questions.
All right. I think the city attorney has a comment.
So we do intend to implement guidelines that would be um public, available for public view, certainly to your view, but also to members of the public. Um, one example, in the federal government context, uh, my recollection is that this would be used only in, for example, an uh, an official investigative interview. Um, so when someone is actually sitting down in a room face-to-face with a law enforcement officer in an investigative interview, not, for example, um, in a a street stop or a chance encounter, but rather an official investigation. Um, and and we certainly um will, will look to the federal government's guidance on that, but that is certainly my recollection as to the line that is drawn there, and we would draw a similar line. Similarly, we will be attentive to not wanting to chill any speech in this chamber. Uh, city staff has no interest um in deciphering um um in this way. Uh, in this chamber, we have no interest in enforcing for a false statement, as it could uh impact the ability of members of the public to come and speak freely to you.
And and how do the guidelines?
Well, we have a line. I think Councilmember Hara's, oh, okay. All right, then you are next, Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you. Um, so how do the guidelines play into that? Does it go along with the ordinance? Is it an addendum? How does it work?
So that would be internal prosecutorial guidelines. So it would not be part of the ordinance.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mayor Potemode.
And do other cities have ordinances like this? You mentioned the federal.
There are a few cities that have similar ordinances, but for the most part, there's the analog for state ordinances, which are a little bit different than the federal one for some states.
All right. Councilmember McEwen.
One reason why this has been suggested is that there has, as best we can tell, been abuse of of people filling out forms that have to do with housing matters and not doing so fully truthfully. So the city attorney said that this would be an investigative tool. But would this not also apply, I mean, right now, if someone moves into a property that has been Ellis'd and claims to be moving in without paying rent, they have to sign a form that makes that declaration. Mr. Harker suggested a better, more complete form. That's a different issue for the moment. But would this not apply to filling out that form, that if you sign a form that states that I am moving in here without paying rent, and the consequence of that is that long-term residents of our city have been evicted and have no recourse, would this not require the, them to be truthful or to run the risk of being prosecuted for making untrue statement to the city?
It is true that on official applications and forms to the city, this would and could be applied, again, um, but only in circumstances where we could prove that the statement was both material and knowingly made. Um, so in any prosecution under this statute, we would have to prove both of those things.
But it would apply to written applications. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right. Seeing, oh, Councilmember Hara.
I'm sorry. You seconded it. I I I wanted to follow up on on that, that you said on the forms. Um, in any of our forms, would uh part of this language be included in the forms then to notify those applicants that there would be um a consequences if they did apply?
It's a good question. Yes, we can certainly make that note. I can't promise to change all city forms by tomorrow, because there are more administrative implications for that than you would think. Um, but uh, but certainly, we can attempt to give the public notice, um, both of this provision generally and of the ways in which it could apply.
Thank you. And I was just going to say, a lot of our forms, I filled one out today, they're available online. So that's an easy way to give notice as well, to change the, I know it's easier said than done, but change the website to inform people that there are consequences.
Yes.
All right. Um, that, apparently, there's no one else in the speaker queue. We have the staff recommendation moved by Winter, seconded by McEwen. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Potemode.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon.
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Moreno.
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Next, we have seven G, which is introduction and first reading of an ordinance adding section two point three-two, point zero-four-zero of the Santa Monica Municipal Code to enhance the investigative authority of the city attorney. And you have two requests to speak.
All right.
So, in response to the same thirteen item that I previously mentioned, uh, we were asked to look at the city attorney's investigative authority. The current municipal code does not provide subpoena power to the city attorney. Um, the city council does have authority to pass an ordinance to grant subpoena power and related investigative authority. Um, ordinances in San Francisco and San Jose are the models for the ordinance that we are proposing this evening. Um, and the uh timing, um, we also found to be interesting because the California appellate court recently upheld San Francisco's ordinance in a case by the name of City and County of San Francisco versus Uber Tex, where the city attorney had actually used its investigative authority, and that was challenged and upheld by the Court of Appeal. So the proposed ordinance would grant five investigative powers to ensure the effectiveness of investigations. That would be the power to inspect, uh, the power to issue subpoenas, the power to issue written interrogatories, the power to obtain sworn sta- testimony and take evidence, and the power to petition a court for an order to compel. And that is the proposed ordinance before you this evening.
All right. Do we have any clarifying questions for the city attorney? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. We have two speakers, Denise Barton and Ed Harker.
Good evening. I'm sorry, why would you want to give the city attorney more investigative powers? So the city and the city attorney can harass people making or alleging claims against the city, or is this just because other cities are doing it? I mean, come on, the city attorney works for the city and for you, right? An example of this would be, how hard was she working behind the scenes in the district voting case? How many times did I ask the, did I ask that the housing authority be looked at for discrimination against myself and other disabled people? But all I was able to get was a conflict of interest from the city attorney, even though the city attorney did say she'd look into the, my concerns about the housing authority in front of the media at the Pico Neighborhood Association meeting after the sexual abuse came to light in the police action league program, which makes it quite clear that the residents aren't the ones of concern to the city attorney. Covering up the illegal activity the city's departments and council do is more important, obviously. So again, I have to ask, why do you want to give the city attorney additional investigative powers? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harker.
Yes, I want to thank the city attorney and staff. This is extremely important. Uh, it'll solve a lot of problems. I'm very impressed with the um ability to exercise these powers prior to filing of a case, because sometimes you don't know what you have until you investigate. Why bring a case when you don't really know? So that's very powerful. Um, in the case where I'm involved, one more time, the um, the coach compliance officer who was on the case explained that without a receipt or an agreement signed by the owner, he doesn't have the material evidence to bring a case. But if the city could go in and, within interrogator discovery and so forth, and get information, I believe this would really prevent a lot of owners from even considering violating and abusing the Ellis Act. This is um, this is wonderful. Where the evicted owners, uh, evicted um tenants are ecstatic about this. This power is is essential to getting the city's work done, I believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harker. That closes the public hearing. The matter is before the council. Councilmember McEwen.
I guess the real question would be, why didn't we already have this? Residents have been asking us for better enforcement of a number of our laws for some time. And what we as council members learn is that if we report something we believe to be a violation, we're not allowed to enforce. So we have to stand back and wait for the investigation. And if staff doesn't have the tools to do that investigation, it never gets completed. So I'll move the staff recommendation.
Moved by McEwen, seconded by Himmelrich. Is there any, uh, Councilmember Himmelrich?
Um, yeah, I I just wanted to uh ask the city attorney, it's my understanding that we, the city council, do have subpoena power. Is that right?
That is correct.
So are we basically delegating our power to you?
Uh, no, they would be different powers. So you have the power in a legislative capacity, potentially related to hearings that you conduct, to bring somebody before you with a subpoena. Um, this would be different. This would be part of investigative enforcement actions.
Thank you.
We're all intrigued by the notion of subpoenaing people to come before us. See-
As will mine be, must be very, very carefully used.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I, that's right. That's right.
Point that out, however.
Um, seeing no one else in the queue, we have a motion to adopt the staff report uh made by McEwen, seconded by Himmelrich. May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Potemode.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon.
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Moreno.
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven, zero.
Next, we have item thirteen A, appointment to two unscheduled vacancies for the Housing Commission. One of the terms ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, and the other ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. We have no request to speak.
All right, let's do the twenty-twenty-one for uh seat first. Councilmember Winter. Oh, Council, there, there's two seats, but we're going to do them one at a time.
Correct.
We're doing the shorter one. Twenty-twenty-one is the shorter one.
Twenty-twenty-one is the shorter one, yes.
We're doing the shorter one first. So, uh, Councilmember Winter.
I'll nominate Todd Flora.
All right. Councilmember Moreno.
Nominate Stephen Weinroth.
All right. Um, I will nominate uh Leonora Kamner. I think that's all the nominations. Can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Potemode.
Kamner.
Councilmember Hara.
Flora.
Councilmember Winter.
Flora.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Flora.
Councilmember McKeon.
Flora.
Councilmember Moreno.
Flora.
And Mayor Davis.
Kamner. All right. Count, um, Mr. Flora, welcome to the Housing Commission.
And you can change my vote to Flora, please.
And you can change my vote as well. So it'll be by acclamation unanimously.
And for the second seat, I'd like to nominate Ellis Raskin.
Do we have, uh, Councilmember Moreno?
Uh, Leonora.
That's Leonora Kamner. Uh, Mayor Potemode, uh, Councilmember Himmelrich.
Um, Zephyr John. Shalom Jeff, Jefferson.
All right. So we have Raskin, Kamner, and Zephyr John. All right. May we have the votes, please?
Councilmember Moreno.
Kamner.
Councilmember McKeon.
Raskin.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Raskin.
Councilmember Winter.
Kamner.
Councilmember Hara.
Raskin.
Mayor Potemode.
Kamner.
And Mayor Davis.
Kamner. So Ms. Kamner has four votes and is appointed to the Housing Commission for the term ending twenty-twenty-three.
Next, we have a thirteen B, appointment to one unscheduled vacancy for the Social Services Commission for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. You actually have two requests to speak. We have a person that was listed on thirteen D. Um, is it Emily? Is that her name? Is your name Emily?
Emily Forscher?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So-
No, I'm sorry.
Right, now, here, I'm going to speak on D.
Okay, anyway. So then you have one request to speak. You have Kay Ambrys.
All right. Ms. Ambrys, welcome.
Good evening, city council and Madam Mayor. My name is Kay Ambrys. I applied for the Social Services Commission, and I'm just here to put a face to a name. I hope you all have read my application. And I am just looking forward to seeing how you vote tonight, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrys. All right. Councilmember Winter.
I will nominate Ms. Ambrys.
All right. Any other nominations? Councilmember McEwen?
Susan Einbinder.
Any other nominations? All right. We'll have a vote. Ms. Anderson Warren.
Councilmember Moreno.
Ambrys.
Councilmember McKeon.
Einbinder.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Ambrys.
Councilmember Winter.
Ambrys.
Councilmember Hara.
Ambrys.
Mayor Potemode.
Ambrys.
And Mayor Davis.
Ambrys.
And I will not uh switch seats with Councilmember Himmelrich, although it seems we got reversed, but I will switch my vote.
All right. So Ms. Ambrys, welcome to the Social Services Commission.
Clark just wanted to give Councilmember Himmelrich time to push her microphone.
That's right.
I kept it pushed so that I don't get hung up in that. The new system, I'm going to practice before I even start.
Okay, so next we have thirteen C, is appointment to one unscheduled vacancy for the Task Force on the Environment. You have no request to speak.
All right. Councilmember Winter.
I'll nominate Alexandra Sokol.
Uh, sorry.
Any other nominations?
Whoops, I'm trying. Oh, Councilmember Himmelrich. Jeff Bush.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, let's have the vote.
Councilmember Hara? Mayor Protem O'Day?
Sokol.
She's shaking it up.
She's just checking to see if you're alert, that's all.
And I am.
Councilmember Winter?
Sokol.
Councilmember McKill?
Sokol.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Bush.
Councilmember Moreno?
Sokol.
And Mayor Davis?
Sokol.
I will change my vote to Sokol.
All right, Ms. Sokol, welcome to the Task Force on the Environment.
Next, we have appointment to one seat for the Urban Forest Task Force, and you have three requests to speak.
All right, before we take nominations, we'll have the public comment. We'll have Elizabeth Laird, Jerry Rubin, and Emily Forsher.
Hi, I'm just here to support the nomination of Emily Forsher to the Urban Forest Task Force. I try to go to those meetings, and she's always there. And she's done a lot of work for mapping the trees, and she would be a wonderful addition to the task force. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jerry Rubin?
Thank you very, very much, Mayor Davis, councilmembers, city staff, Jerry Rubin, Santa Monica. First of all, I want to thank the Urban Forest Task Force for the great work they've been doing for the past decade. I want to thank the city council and the city manager for expanding how many members they have from seven to nine members to take on the important and timely work of working on a possible ordinance protecting trees on private property. I also want to thank the council for reappointing the longtime chair of the task force, Grace Phillips, that's done amazing work there. And I also want to lend my support to Emily Forsher. I go to a lot of these meetings, she's there, puts in the time, and having her actually on the task force will be a real benefit. I also want to give a lot of praise to our urban forester, Matthew Wells, and to the landscape department and city staff at those meetings. In fact, everyone's invited to the next Urban Forest Task Force meeting. It'll take place tomorrow, on Wednesday, at the PICO Library in Virginia Park at 6:30 PM. And they're always very interesting. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Ms. Forsher?
Hi, I'm Emily Forsher. I just want to thank you again for considering my application and apologize for the issues I had submitting it. And I really hope to join the task. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forsher. All right, Councilmember Himmelrich, are you in the queue?
I, well, I want to say Emily Forsher, and also say that I didn't know this last time, but I've known Emily probably for 15 years, right? She was on the newspaper with my daughter. She was, I believe, editor of the newspaper, and was diligent and did a great job. I think she will do just as well with this.
Moved by acclamation.
All right. Seeing no dissent, moved by acclamation. Ms. Forsher, welcome to the Urban Forest Task Force.
We do get to say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes. All right, next item.
Next is 13E, request of councilmembers Hara, Moreno, and Winter, that the council allocate $20,000 of discretionary funds to the Symphony Tour Fund operated through a Santa Monica Arts Parent Association, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. These funds will assist students from low-income households to travel with the Santa Monica High School Symphony Orchestra's Spring 2020 Tour to Europe. And you have two requests to speak.
All right, who's going to speak to this item?
Right, it was a choir.
All right, I guess. Councilmember Moreno, the choir boy.
Well, I was, I was a Santa Monica high school singer. I was in the program my entire academic life in Santa Monica. It kept me out of trouble, and it introduced me to people who I would have never become friends with otherwise. I will never forget a trip. When I was in high school, I went to and performed at the Carnegie in New York. And that, among many other experiences, have got me to where I am today. So I am in great favor of supporting the arts and certainly San Ohio.
All right, any other comments before I go to the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, this is something we do on a pretty regular basis. I should point out that this money would go not to the choir, but the Symphony Tour Fund. I think we ought to take note of what Councilmember Moreno just said, and maybe at next meeting he could sing the pledge of allegiance.
That's out there in the public.
That ought to bring in a crowd. But just to emphasize that these funds would be used to allow those students in the orchestra who do not have the financial wherewithal to make this trip, to do so, and to better the education of our students in the, you know, in the arts and culture. And also, I note from the letter received that not only will they have scheduled performances in Amsterdam and Berlin, but they happen to be planning to stop by our sister city of Hamburg. We just saw some representatives there, so they give the opportunity for the orchestra to further their goodwill with our sister city of Germany.
All right, let's go to, oh, Councilmember Hara.
I just wanted to add that having these funds out there allocated for our low-income households, I am hoping that a lot of the parents decide to allow their kids to go because they will have the funding. So I am just so looking forward to some of our other students to have this opportunity. So it's great.
All right, well, let's hear from, I think, a couple of students. Silas Garcia George and Kaya Rawls.
In the key of C, please.
Good evening, Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem O'Day, members of the city council. My name's Silas Garcia George. I come before you this evening as a member of Santa Monica High School Symphony Orchestra to ask for your help in enabling our award-winning ensemble of 90 dedicated and hard-working young musicians to achieve a dream that we all have worked towards since elementary school. Thanks to the devotion of our teachers and instructors, one of whom is in the audience here, and the hard work of every member of the orchestra, we now have the opportunity to perform under the, to perform a number of the masterworks of orchestral music, including Beethoven's Fifth Symphony, in two of the finest concert halls in the world, the Concertgebau in Amsterdam and the Berlin Philharmonic. During our tour, we'll have the opportunity to meet other young musicians from several different countries and serve proudly as our home city's informal ambassadors to Santa Monica's sister city, Hamburg, Germany. As any of you who has played in music knows, an orchestra is a single living thing, and each player in the orchestra is a necessary and indispensable part of it. We, the members of our orchestra, all realize this and are doing everything we can do to make sure that each and every member of the orchestra will be able to join so that we can perform as a whole and complete ensemble with no student left behind. On behalf of the orchestra, I ask you to support us in making this international endeavor possible for all these young musicians, and to ensure that every member has the opportunity to participate in this unique and important experience. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like Councilmember Moreno has a question, or intends to see one or the other.
What's your instrument?
I play the bass.
Awesome. One of my favorite. We look forward to having you come back and play us something.
That was a very compelling argument. Well said.
That's right. All right, Kaya Rawls.
Okay, good evening, councilmembers and mayors. My name is Kaya Rawls. Thank you so much for having me. I've been playing cello since the fourth grade, and I'm now a junior at San Ohio and a student in our 90-piece Symphony Orchestra. We are currently planning and fundraising for our tour, where we're performing in Berlin and Amsterdam, by performing at local events around the city and doing bake sales. We also have a Disney concert coming up on October 11th, where we're going to be playing a lot of classic Disney music along with videos that are going to be on a big projector. It's super fun, it's great for kids. You're all very welcome to attend. We would very much appreciate it. And earlier next year as well, we're going to be having Spaghetti and Strings, which is a dinner, concert, silent auction, fundraising event. And it's been a beautiful event every time that we've had it. And the reason why we're doing all of this work and the reason why I'm standing here today is because we are not going to be going on this tour unless every student has the funds to be able to. And we are incredibly grateful for the many generous donations the city of Santa Monica has made to these once-in-a-lifetime opportunities in the past. And we're really hoping to make these life-changing experiences a reality for all of our students this year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rawls. I appreciate that. That concludes the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moreno. She says she plays the cello.
I just wanted to know when the Disney concert is.
Oh, October 11th.
Got it. And that's at Barnum?
Yes.
And it's great.
Yeah, they do a good job. Councilmember Himmelrich?
Their symphony is incredible.
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
And whoa, whoa, and how do we get tickets?
You can go to the San Ohio Orchestra website.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. That concludes the public hearing. Somebody make a motion?
I'll move we allocate the $20,000 as delineated in the staff report.
All right, moved by Winter, seconded by Moreno. A little slow, but there. All right, since it's money, we need to have a roll call vote. Ms. Anderson Warren?
Councilmember Moreno?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember McKill?
In order this time, yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Not over yet, yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, and we look forward to hearing all about the trip. Thank you so much.
Next, we have 13F, request of Councilmember McKill that in light of the new complexities revealed in the recently adopted City of Santa Monica Privacy and Security Statement and the pending imposition of certain businesses of the California Consumer Privacy Act, council direct staff to schedule a study session on city privacy policies and protections to hear public concerns and gather council direction on appropriate standards for city data collection and usage. And you have no request to speak.
All right, Councilmember McEwen.
So a month ago, we replaced, we adopted a 10-page privacy statement that replaced what had been a one-page statement. And I had some real questions about what was in those 10 pages, but I voted for it as a consent calendar item because it turned out it was an accurate description of what we're doing with data that we collect. And it's important that the public know what we're doing with data that we collect. But it did raise some issues. I spent a good part of the summer in my other country, Ireland, and in the European Union, when you go to a website or you enter a page, you're given all kinds of information about how that data will be used, and you're given the opportunity to opt out. And it troubled me that in many of our city data collection means there wasn't that transparency and there wasn't the opportunity to opt out. Now, as it happens, the state of California will be adopting something called the California Consumer Privacy Act, which takes effect the first of the year. So it occurred to me that really council should make a policy decision on data collection, because that's never really come to us before. And I would propose that we compare our data collection to what is allowed of large corporations in California, over 25 million under the California Consumer Privacy Act, and that we apply a pretty simple prism to the data we collect, which is this, do we really have a purpose for collecting this data to better serve people? Because if we don't, we shouldn't be collecting it. And of course, we need to be careful about how we store, manage, and protect that private information. So I'll make a motion that we direct staff to examine these issues and come back to us with a study session.
All right, moved by McEwen, seconded by Moreno. Mr. Cole?
Councilmember McEwen was kind enough to discuss this and get some reaction, and I told him that I supported bringing this issue to the council, and I still do. I wonder, Councilmember McEwen and members of the city council, whether the best forum for this is a study session for two reasons. First, much of the data we collect is incident to our doing business. We collect when people sign up for water bills, we collect information on them, et cetera. And secondly, I think the lens that he's suggesting is a good one. So I would offer as a potential alternative, rather than a study session, which we sort of open up to start over again from scratch, since we're not a commercial business, we don't sell any data to anyone, never have and never will, that we bring back a report for public comment and discussion, not a consent calendar item, but administrative item that analyzes any differences between our current practices and what's allowable under the law that he's referenced, and suggestions and recommendations of pros and cons. It's a slight variation on the theme, but it's meant to focus the discussion rather than start from scratch.
So that would enable us then to actually make a decision that night?
Absolutely.
Well, that's a step forward from what I was asking for, so I will modify my, I'll modify my direction to staff to ask them to bring back an administrative item, accomplishing what I'd asked for before.
All right, moved by, well, okay, moved by McEwen, seconded by Himmelrich, even though Moreno had seconded the original motion. You guys can share credit. No, no, that's fine. Moved by McEwen, the amended motion moved by McEwen, seconded by Himmelrich. Do we need a roll call vote on this one?
It's direction, staff.
It's just direction, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes unanimously, seven to zero. And that takes us to the next item.
The next item is Public Input. Public comment is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item, and you have one request to speak.
All right, Denise Barton.
Good evening. I'd like to go back to the issue of harmful cleaning products being used by owners and management of buildings with affordable housing, such as mine at the Chelsea at 1318 Second Street, where Court &amp; Scott and Sarah Corporate Management choose to use Fabuloso, which has an environmental rating of F, and Odoban, claiming to be a green product. But if you look at Odoban's safety data sheet dated June 2, 2018, it clearly states that it has immediate acute health hazards, including irritation of the eyes and respiratory system, burning pain in the mouth, throat, abdomen, swelling of the larynx, affecting the ability to breathe. Repeated exposure can cause skin irritation, and it is flammable in both liquid and vapor forms. So considering I and other tenants, including affordable housing tenants, are sensitive to these products and having negative health effects, I submitted a letter from legal aid and my doctor regarding my chemical sensitivity to the Santa Monica Housing Authority, with the thought that the cleaning products like the ones being used would be discontinued to provide a safe, healthy living environment, especially in the common areas of the building, which also has a negative effect in our units. I am forced to have a towel at the bottom of my door, vacuum the hallway by my door, as well as clean my apartment excessively due to the powder form repeatedly being left in the hallways. And my doctor recommends that I keep my nose and mouth covered in the common areas of the building. So would this be a way, so would this be the way Barbara Collins gets all those extra vouchers each year? Or is it just more retaliation against me trying to get me out of the city? Thank you.
All right, that concludes the 14 items. Do we have any adjournments? Wonderful, that's good not to have adjournments. So it's still National Voter Registration Day, it's only 9:08. So for those of you watching on City TV or listening on KCRW, you can still register to vote online at smvote.net, or you can pick up a form at all Santa Monica libraries. Again, later this week, we'll be conducting voter registration drives with the League of Women Voters at 3:30 PM on September 26th at the Ocean Park Library, and at 10:00 AM on Saturday, September 28th, at the PICO Branch Library. So come on out and be vote-ready. All right, we are now adjourned until October 15th. The regular meeting on October 8th has been canceled due to the Yom Kippur holiday. So we will see you all on the 15th. Thank you. Thank you.